This time we'll call the October nineteen twenty twenty one meeting in the Jackson County was supervisor's order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Sinis and myself, Jack Willie and your supervisors. We have Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the auditor's office here, serving us and providing for our minutes and stuff, and we have, as usual, our first appointment this morning, David Dryer.
Good morning, good morning. I only have one permit today for the Coca Valley Electric, so we work in the Coca Township. Section seven thirteen along sixty-third street and the Hurstville Road, the interpretive center up there, they're installing conduit along sixty-third street boring under Hurstville Road. To make some improvements to get ready for that bridge that's being brought in, so we recommend approval of that.
I would make motion to approve the electrical permit as presented. Second, motion of the second to approve the Coca Valley Electric permit, all those in favor? I motion carry. I would note that you're not, Luann Goke is ill, so she will not be in this morning. Christina Trenton said that the individual that was training her this morning, Joey Hover, an attorney. He is in trial today, so they will not be coming either. And Lynn Bopes is gonna move up and maybe we can call Nathan and Jeannie and see if they could come in earlier. Cause we have some things to discuss about the the move also today, so. Lisa, you're on.
All right, so this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October twelve twenty twenty one board proceedings. As written by Deputy Auditor Hoy and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second, the motion the second to approve the publication of the minutes, the previous meeting, all those in favor? Motion carrying.
Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant to Michael Burke for fifteen dollars for the zoning commission mileage. I know that this was a claim that was approved last week and then in the claims package, but there was an issue with his ACH, and so that's why we're asking for a handwritten warrant today.
Second, the motion the second, second to approve the handwritten warrant, all those in favor? All right, motion carry.
I do have a sealed bid this morning. For the parking lot addition, I know that Marty has been working on, I know we've looked at it all, so we have received one bid. It was my understanding that someone else had bid on this and had said that they dropped it off at the auditor's office. But nobody in the office took the bid in, so we don't know if they dropped it off at the correct office. I've called Marty several times, he's trying to contact the individual, he's had no luck. And I said, well, I mean, don't you think though that if something would have been dropped off, that somebody would have given it to us? But the man was very specific that said that he dropped it off at the auditor's office, but nobody, we don't have the bid, nobody remembers talking to him nor receiving it.
Is this for the parking lot at senior center?
This is for the parking lot at the senior center.
And Marty had called later that day or what, next day? And we were talking about having secondary roads do the, some grading there for it and currently I should have David with their schmuck with these day bridges and so I think he was gonna have whoever bid include the leveling off of the gravel.
To want to see if we can get a hold of Marty and ask him.
I know that Marty is having, he actually is done at the senior center, when I visited with him this morning, they are having an issue with the door down there. And we certainly can visit with him, but I don't know what this.
Why don't we recess for a minute and we'll try to call him?
So if you want, we can, because we've only received one bid, we can table this, we don't have to open it up today.
Make a motion to table it until our next meeting, which is on Thursday at two o'clock.
Actually, two oh five, cause we're gonna accept bids till two o'clock and we're gonna open up till two, at two oh five is our meeting, and I have received no bids back.
You'll get some.
Okay.
Oh, for the building.
Yeah, I've gotten none so far, not by email nor sealed.
So they're due on by two o'clock on Thursday.
Yes, the twenty first.
So I guess, yeah, my.
You have a motion to approve second, the point tabling.
Yeah, I would like to see more than one bid, I guess, yeah, I would second that motion.
Okay, motion on a second to table action on the, the bids till we have an opportunity on our meeting on Tuesday afternoon, all those in favor? I motion carry.
And that's all that I have on, on my agenda for today, and just as a just to kind of get you up to date again, I did go out to the Andrew Jackson Care Facility yesterday, I have been working with Department of Human Services concerning those files that are out in the building. There's thirty-one file cabinets that they have contracted with the country, someone to come in and do the, a shred onsite. We were out there yesterday and those are locked file cabinets, and like I said, there are thirty-one, we found keys for twenty-seven other cabinets, so there are four that are not. I can't, we can't get open quite now, we're looking for keys or, and so at least we're moving forward with that, and I believe that that project will be completed here shortly, hopefully before the first of the year.
So I must have missed you because I stopped there yesterday, also went through that building, I didn't know, and I was just to see how big that room was because of our furnishings that we're talking about at the hospital. The far end of that building, back where the water supply is way back, that, that stall is actually empty. Jared was not there, I did talk to him briefly on the phone, but I don't know if they're using that stall.
That's the root, that's the stall right next to that has an opener.
Yes. Yeah, the panels are still there.
Yes, because I think that's the door we're going to use because it has a, an opener in it, and I think that would be easier for them. And I, I think they're trying to get this done in November, I think. I think Denver did not have any days open, and we are getting towards the end of October here, I believe they are trying to schedule for November, but yeah, you're right, it's, everything there looked wonderful, it was clean. Obviously, they've been doing some work there, the filing cabinets, Department of Human Services does not want, so we will end up with thirty-one file cabinets.
Well, they said next door they needed.
Yeah, and that's what I said to her, that, and you know, there's some old light diffusers, there's some lumber on top of there, you know, so.
That room's not very useful, actually. I mean, you could put some stuff in there like chairs and stuff, if that's the case, but.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest maybe, you know, because there are some droppings on top of the file cabinets, and that's very nice furniture, and I would feel very bad.
I would certainly, yeah.
And I don't know about the, the next year will be either how secure that would be, I didn't look at it that closely.
I know the roof there's because I want pianos kind of on.
Well, and a lot of that could be from not being climate controlled.
I think there was three pianos there, wasn't it?
Yeah, there's an organ and two, two organs, there one organ and two pianos, yeah. We've been trying to get rid of them for years, we, we asked the Don into the historical society, we.
Yes, fam, this is Jack Willie calling, and our, we had several people canceled for our meeting today, you wanna see if Nathan and Jeannie can come in?
I guess, you know, we do need to, to look for a, a site to.
Well, I would say we would be ready. Between now and ten o'clock.
I'm a little, what about, um, up here?
Okay, thank you.
So that would be touchdown storage that's.
They got the big basement area, there's a ramp going down to that. We, we just call them and ask them how much it is and how much room they got.
Did our other prospect call through?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
But he did have a realtor call him and say that somebody wanted to rent all forty-five thousand square feet.
So if we're talking about the, the furnitures at the hospital right now, as far as a place to put them, I did walk through the storage building that's right behind the, where the prospective jail is gonna be. And yeah, there's lots and lots of room in there, and I called him again, and he thought, he said that he had a client that may be interested in the whole works, he had two other ones that are now interested within a day, I don't know how that works, but anyway, we have, I was supposed to call him back today, he said he'd have more information today for us. I asked him if the price was negotiable, he said not at this time, would be interested, so.
Okay.
So.
So I did call Shelly to see.
Yeah, we could do a walkthrough, I said to Shelly that.
She said that she didn't know what they would want as far as any kind of lease.
I don't know what size that building is either, how enclosed tight it is, a, a.
Oh, it's enclosed tight.
Okay, I've not been through that building, so, and that's okay with me, that building, it's probably got an overhead door too, correct?
I can't tell you that, there wasn't on the front.
I don't think I know that either.
He did have a shop in there at one time, though, correct, he'd almost have to have, you know, but then they moved the door in.
There's one way to find out. Good thing for them, it would be handy to.
We're still in.
We're in open session.
Hi, this is me again, does the peace pipe players building have an overhead door? Okay, thank you. Yes, it does have an overhead door in the back of the building.
Still no price, no price yet.
I think that's probably been unnegotiable.
Well, at least we have some options, so.
So the question is then is, was tomorrow the day or tomorrow, Thursday or?
Both, that's the only two days they had available. So why don't we start tomorrow with everything that comes to the courthouse and bring it here?
Someone should probably coordinate with Marty to see, you know, his guys lined up or whoever, yeah.
How many volunteers are gonna have, or how's that? Is.
Well, you said you wanted some of those wider ones to put out in the hall here.
That's what I would like to see, yeah, some of those chairs, I'd like to when people are waiting for, you know, the.
And then we want the conference table and the red chairs that go around there to go downstairs, we could bring them, does anybody?
And I know there's some other office chairs that people have spoken for, and I know that we talked about all the plexiglass we'd like now. I know Beth did take some, but she was unable to get the hooks, or she couldn't get something, yeah, screw the chains on, something, yeah, she was unable to get them. I know that.
Well, didn't Marty say he would take all the plexiglass they had, so.
Yeah, so we've got some things definitely that we would like taken now.
And I think that when we set a time and we call Janet and Bob about when we're gonna be up there, Marty has to be there too, so we can walk around and work on stuff.
It would be nice if we could take someone from each office to move equipment to the door, so it could be loaded, and.
I know together that we build, they said when you call them, let them know when we're gonna do it, they'll have some.
Do they know that, that we were gonna do that tomorrow and Thursday, basically?
Yeah, I told them the times.
You, who, who are you talking about, it who know?
Together we build.
Yeah, I told them last, I told them Monday, and I told them that when we got ready to move.
I guess it snuck up on us kind of quick.
Yes, it did, because Amber, Amber was on the walkthrough, and we told her at that time, we were gonna need some help from the Together We Build guys to.
And apparently she's asking Marty about this, so Marty should be really involved here probably, like you say.
She didn't know who to call, so she called him. Then she called me and I talked to her, and I said, we would talk about it last night at the meeting, and they're waiting for a call from me to Dean Engel to say, this is when we're gonna be there.
Well, like Larry said too, we could certainly put a lot of that stuff in the, in the, I don't know, we don't wanna get in your way, low, are you tend to load up there for the?
No.
Well, worked.
For what?
Well, it's kind of hard for us to load with something that we can't do anymore.
You can't get there.
With the city project going on, it, it makes it a little bit difficult, we'll still have to use the elevator, but we can't load there anymore, we're gonna have to change our process.
Come out here.
I don't know if my knees can take.
I'll use a ramp, I bring it up here. Do you got a portable ramp you can put on the stairs?
I'll use the wheelchair lift.
This is horrible.
You can't come out this door?
Well, we can, but it's kind of a thoroughfare, people.
Have you ever seen this load equipment? So, uh, let me just say this, we start, Bjorn, um, next week we'll start loading the equipment, and that's a, that's a two-day, that's Thursday, Friday, and then Monday. So this is three days of getting equipment out, then on Monday, November first, the day before the election, then all of the equipment that's downstairs, we line the hallway, after we close the doors for the day, we line the hallway with all of that equipment. And then we load it, and everything is delivered on election morning. This is.
So can you line the hallway out here, so you can go up the front door?
Well, we will.
But see, Bjorn's gonna be delivering stuff.
Do that during the business hours.
Yeah. Yeah, it changes our whole plan. And I still haven't.
So this is almost right open out here, the street isn't it there, what, what's?
Oh, we can't get to the steps, so I mean, there's no curb cut in the first place, and then there's sidewalks all broke out, it's not poured.
Yeah. This is gonna take us a, quite a bit while longer to, to load.
Even from the law enforcement center, that side. So even like even up from their own, right at the parking lot side, come down that sidewalk there now.
The corner is, the corner here is all taken out, so, and then you know, we had to go down the steps on the west side, if that's what you're saying, but we can't drive.
I'm just trying to get you to this door, if we can get.
Pass the sidewalk's not here.
You can't make the corner, it's not there.
It's just formed, they're just forms. I'm just driving on that.
You know, yeah.
Well, man, is this here, and then we'll see what happens the next election.
Well, you should be, I mean, not now, but the Finney sidewalk should be lined up, waiting some from the intersection, and just drive down the sidewalk and park right at the front steps.
Well, it won't be.
Not this year.
By this year, next week.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll manage this year.
No, we don't wanna clutter up the breezeway up there unless you're not gonna use it, then it would be a good spot to put some things for the time being that.
So how are you going to unload anything, I mean, are you talking about all light stuff?
Oh, how do we unload the stuff here?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotta come down the hallway.
So I gotta come down the hallway.
Even the table and such.
Down this, either down the steps, either through the, you know, whatever is little can come down on the, the handicap lift. Otherwise, everything's gotta come down the hallway.
Down the elevator and then.
Or in the back door and down the steps.
Yep.
I think that ramp's just too dangerous, even this one.
Yeah, it's not.
If you're carrying something, that's not a good.
It is dangerous.
Oh, that ramp, no. It's so steep.
And it's broke up, I mean, the concrete's kind of broke up too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just one of those days you have to pace yourself, whoever is helping. You know. And the other thing that's really bad is during office hours, that will mean that if we're using a trailer, you know, we're gonna take up quite a few parking spots here on the east side.
Or the trailer with the trucks.
Yeah.
Sixty foot long.
And you can't.
Three parking places.
You will, you have to turn around somehow, because the street here has been closed. Maybe it'll be open by next, by tomorrow, but the street here is closed, oh, was, oh, okay, I know they laid the bricks in yesterday.
And they're working on this one over here, and they've got two. The other two, I think they're about ready.
Okay.
For one different bricks.
Yeah. So I mean, there's some logistics when it comes to election time this year, I mean, so we've got that issue, and then trying to get the equipment from the hospital and such. Don't take this wrong, it wasn't my, I really wasn't gonna try and be in charge of this, cause I've got other stuff I need to take.
No, and there's no reason for it to be, you know, it's just, Jason, we need to sort of, we're gonna go with it, basically, you know.
Take the van out this afternoon when we go up there, that could be loaded ahead of time, we need to. Or do we just?
We don't have a key, so we need to coordinate with someone to get a key.
Well, does anyone have the maintenance gentleman, is it Bob?
Yeah, I don't know if I would call him at this particular point in time, I think I would try and visit with Janet at the hospital instead of Bob.
Okay. So we should call her about now and let her know that we really need to get in there today.
Well, you'd have to see if Marty's available, otherwise.
Marty should be here ten fifteen now.
Okay.
I mean, I can help this afternoon or after the meeting.
I cannot.
Okay. What about Together We Build, you wanna talk to them and see if there's anybody available for today?
They would probably be available later this afternoon.
Let's see what Marty says about the van and what he's got going on here this afternoon, if we can move some of that stuff, if you're talking light stuff like chairs and whatnot, and you have time to look at that table, if there's wiring in there that you gotta unplug, or what's, what's, I don't.
All table comes apart in different sections, but the two screens, those need to come down, and all the wiring, it feeds back to the center, and there's.
The screens are on the wall, though, I mean.
Yeah.
The table's got a monitor thing in the center of it.
Is this gonna work?
I guess, I don't know what the plans are for them.
Okay, so, so what, where do you want the screens that are currently in the conference room downstairs, that, that's the room we're talking about, there's two screens on the wall. Where do you want them to go and what do you want them to do?
I see them facing west. Unless you wanna go in the back, maybe they need to go in the back, well.
Are you talking in the community room?
Community room, yes.
And then what do you want them to do to? What do you want hooked up to it?
It's a conference, I mean, it's a basically, we wanna do our meetings like this over them, correct?
Yes.
Over them.
It's just another place to have a larger meeting.
There is a camera system, micro and, microphones and cameras, correct? It's the, it's the room where they used to have their.
When we need to get networking down there, and it's not just set them up and plug them in and go.
Yeah, I get it, so I mean, it's basically a system like when they had their board meetings, they were, you could go a week later on the city site.
Basically, the same setup we got here, except their speakers and stuff are on the, on the table, so.
They got, yeah.
They bought something that they, did they never use, or they used once, what was that? Was that the camera system?
Just the sound system.
I was thinking there was like a, just a real small camera.
Stick around, Marty.
A few minutes, Marty.
I suppose.
Morning.
It's been wired.
What?
It's been, oh, outwired. Okay, so we have two bids.
Well.
Okay, hang on here.
We're getting ready to start moving stuff out of the hospital.
Okay.
We have Schuler's coming tomorrow and Thursday. But now there's some discussion that maybe we should get some of the stuff that's going to be coming to the courthouse and get that out sometime today.
Okay.
Um, so.
Is the van available?
I'm sure it is, I did, pardon me?
Is it empty?
Yeah, but you wanna remember, it's only this wide in there. Because it's got all the shelving in there.
You're right. Yeah.
Um, let's just kiss this stuff goodbye.
Well, how, how, give, first of all, what are you grabbing, I could, you could use my flatbed trailer if we can haul around that, and we could pull it with the dump truck. If that works, you know, I'm willing to do that.
Are you available early afternoon, or what are you thinking, Larry, what are you thinking, you're available, or we gotta get a hold of somebody from the hospital to get in, I mean, all of a sudden this stuff kind of snowballed on us, you know?
Good afternoon meeting, I just need to run home and change.
So even, if you had an enclosed trailer of some kind too.
Pardon me?
You don't have any type of the closed trailer per se.
My job trailers, my enclosed trailer that I can get is loaded too, so.
I have nothing enclosed, I, you know, like a ten by.
Well, even if we just go up there today and move all the stuff from the courthouse to the loading dock, or one of them, and just have it divided, jail, courthouse, and then when they show up tomorrow with their trailer, we got a forty-foot trailer to bring in. We can load all the courthouse stuff in that and bring it down here tomorrow. At least get it, like conference table, get it taken apart, and get it in there, headed in the right direction.
And you said, when we were up there, that you wanted all the plexiglass that's up there.
Bet that.
I thought you wanted all of it.
I want the, I want the wall here, or stools, that's what I was asking for.
The what?
The stool to fit on the wall, because ours are junk and they're brand new. But they said we couldn't have them until.
After the eighteenth of, or eighth of December, so.
But we have other equipment that I want you to get also.
I understand that, but that's.
The ice machine, yes, I did.
Well, that metal shelving that we seen in there.
Yeah.
We, we should take all that, that is unbelievable.
Like a little. No, no, yeah, no, and that's what we said, together we got, we have enough cabinets, there's enough of those tall cabinets that would be great.
That was one thing I was really surprised last night, that John said he was at Together We Build zoning, and he said, I can't believe they walked all, walked away from all those beautiful cabinets.
Yeah.
So, the office chair, some of the office chairs look like they're brand new, you know?
We, we understand that there's a lot of equipment there, we just need to figure out how we get it out of there now, yeah.
It's like I told you, we, we need a building that you can store that in, that's time of control.
Well, we, 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 we think we do, and we might have an alternative if that one falls through, but.
Cause in the past, you know, we stored stuff out the old truck top, and within a month or two, it was rusted, moldy and everything.
Here would be my suggestion, if you do this this afternoon, I would suggest going to every office that participated in the tour, and I would try and get one person from each office, and see if they could help you put chairs, whatever is on their mind, and that way, it's not quite so overwhelming, and that way, they know what they want, what they, you know.
And I think one of the, you know, one of the major areas with chairs is the cafeteria, and you could pull right in at that, you know, with something to get those, and they could, we could bring the chairs from the former rehab center and bring that all over there.
Well, and all.
I think you're gonna have one, once, one, one of those trailers is gonna be completely full of chairs.
Well, and, and you know, like you said, that metal shelving that I think will help clean up our election rooms, what I'm hoping, is to get everything.
Everybody could use that.
That is, that's very, yeah, so I guess that's my suggestion is to organize this, is to take some help, get some extra hands, you know, many hands make for light work, and try and see if we can organize and get some stuff moved to a certain area, I, you know, even, even if you're up in the admitting area, if you could just, you know, have the trailer there and you work through that admitting area, down the ramp and into the trailer. And we'd have to be very careful, because I think there's still the, oh, no, maybe not, is the, the dialysis still operating?
I think so, yes.
All right, well, we have to be very aware, you know, we did block marking for the dialysis, you know.
So, I mean, maybe even, and or does.
Yeah, we walk in, like we walk down this hall, and here's, they're standing there with a mask on and everything, we're just like, they forgot somebody.
Well, it even said on the radio, KMAQ, that they were still operating.
Oh, okay.
So maybe Ben has a smaller trailer that we can pull, that's empty too, if he's got some kind of enclosed trailer, would be, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to finding out if he gets something smaller we can use.
Oh, Schuler, you mean?
Yeah.
The trailer he's got, you can store a lot of stuff in that.
Well, he's got a couple of large ones, but he may have a smaller sixteen, eighteen foot one.
I don't know.
Easy enough to find out, we'll find out after the meeting here.
Well, we're gonna be doing some phone calling and some checking out, and we will get back to you, and.
I would say be prepared to, if you got time. I would say be prepared to, if you got time to.
When I leave here, I, my boy has a friend that has a trailer that they use to go. Put all their four wheelers in. I'll call him and see if he can call him, see if we can rent that from him or something.
Hermy's got one.
Who? Well, the little ten by. This one here is like a thirty footer. It's like what Ben's got.
See what you can find. You'll be around close today here in the next couple of.
I, I probably, I'm going down the secondary roads and changing light bulbs out in the. In the sign, signing office.
Machine mic doesn't work anymore?
I don't know.
I only have one other comment since Marty's here. One of the things that we've been working on is that the parking lot at the ball field. We're trying to get whoever to quit driving through the. Posts that are in the ground and across the.
Just get one of those strips.
We're trying really hard.
I had secondary roads put a telephone pole there. And somebody pushed the telephone pole, I'll always let you drive through it.
So we're asking that whoever is, please quit.
Yeah, we can ask that. Let's talk to law enforcement and see if they got a camera. We certainly need some cameras. Did we ever get our cameras that we?
I, I'm gonna say I, I don't know, but I don't think so.
Let's get some cameras up.
Okay.
We could use them.
It's just, it's, it's weird. I put the cable there alongside of the. Head start, I put the cable back up through there and that eliminated come through there and then they just started going between. The citizen, senior citizen building and operation new view. So then we went up there, we put stake in that one. They just went to this one, then we put the telephone pole and I'm almost positive they pushed the telephone pole out of the way. Well, it's a, I don't know what it actually says. Roger had his guys put it up.
So let's, let's, yeah, see if we can get some, if Long Park's gonna have some trail cams or something to that effect. They haven't done that before.
Well, we touched base with Frank, but it didn't help us at all, so.
No, I can believe it.
Okay.
Either that or, I'd either that or I'm gonna have them park the buses up there. I'm gonna call the fairgrounds and see if they want.
Roger thought maybe taking some of the old bridge plank and lay it on the post and spike it down through so they can't move it. I just got done talking with him twenty minutes ago and he was gonna go up and look at it and then give me a recommendation.
Or can you put a telephone pole on top of the other post?
You could do that too. The only thing is we, I don't know if we have access to telephone poles enough, but I know there's enough. I'll call you right back.
We did this morning, just, I know you brought that bid in. But we have a meeting Tuesday afternoon and we're gonna deal with the opening of those bids Tuesday afternoon.
Well, I'll get a hold of Mike because Mike Wagner said he was gonna bid on it, but he, again, this guy had, the only reason I found him is he's working at. McDonald's and I caught him there, so, and he went home and did it. And I'll get a hold of Mike, see if he'll put a bid in, and that's Thursday, right?
Well, I would say we're gonna have a meeting at two oh five on Thursday, so if they would get the bid to us by two, if that's okay with the board. That they would have until two o'clock on Thursday to get the bid to us.
Okay, I'll get a hold of him. All right, and I'll see if I can come up with a trailer too.
Okay, okay, love you back in touch with you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
This time we reconvene the meeting.
We've, we've always been in session here.
Oh, we have? Oh, okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay, at this time, we're joined by Lynn Boach, Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So I'm here once again following the uh region's governing board meeting held yesterday that Jack and I both attended. These moments kind of fly by sometimes. Yesterday, there was discussion that the. Region will have to have a single case audit for the Federal Cares Act dollars and so they will utilize Baker Tilly, the same auditing firm that. We use for the region and that Scott County uses, uh David Farmer. Really advocated for that just because of the familiarity of that agency with all the processes within Scott County and that's where this money was. Was uh passed through onto the recipients. And then the biggest decision probably that was made yesterday was um following a couple of meetings with the board and. A lot of management team discussion with the Robert Young Center. They approved and amended FY twenty-two budget. To account for um expenditures to use the additional revenue that we have this year in addition to trying to spend down some of our fund balance. So I have the spreadsheet that I can share with the board if you want to take a look at it or if you want me to go through that, Jack, whatever your preference is. As far as what was approved. Basically, the approvals in summary uh bring us into line with what we need to have available for children services at this point in time. And we are also still missing one adult resident, crisis residential, no, I'm sorry, crisis community based service. So it would allow um for those services to be intact. There would be an agreement signed with another region likely for another service called the Intensive Residential Service. Home, the URS, which is designed to serve um individuals who are. Pretty severely ill and complex and what their needs are to keep them safe and in the community. Within the Robert Young contract, uh they had developed a proposal to the board and recommended a number of different positions. The positions in summary that the governing board approved yesterday for children's services include um. Uh six care coordinator positions. Three of them would be designed to work with families that have very complex needs that don't necessarily fall under the. Umbrella of juvenile court services or Department of Human Services and yet they have children in the family or a child in the family. With complex physical and mental, not necessarily physical, but more mental health needs. Uh a liaison position between the region and Christine Gradert and Department of Human Services. To coordinate for services to children. Similar type of care coordinator position to um. Work with Department of Human Services and Juvenile Court Services and then a homeless coordinator to work with the homeless population, which is. Becoming increasingly challenging. There's the number of homeless individuals continues to gradually be on the rise. And while some of the bigger providers, Humility Homes of Davenport is the biggest one within our region, um. Muscatine County Services, MCSA in Muscatine has a pretty large homeless shelter. They have staff there that do some peer coordination, but there are still individuals who are homeless who do not have the support of staff to figure out how to break that homeless cycle.
So when is this all supposed to?
All of this is effective immediately after approval yesterday because.
I mean, the homeless thing is the winter's.
Right.
Snow is coming, so that would be a good.
Yeah, yeah, no, this, all this money that is approved, was approved yesterday and this amended budget is available immediately. And is hopefully going to be largely expended by June thirtieth to start these programs. So we should be hopefully seeing some increase in services for kids. Christine Gradert has done a lot of work with. Meeting with all a wide variety of children's providers and stakeholders for children's services. She has really canvassed. The entire five county region. So she has a good pulse from providers who are saying they're available to do services. It won't be to anyone's surprise that the biggest challenge is the workforce. Because this will require, um even for some of the agencies, increasing their programs, it'll be getting the workforce. Anything else, Jack, you want to add about that? I mean, that was a very high overview, but. Uh, there are a couple of things in law enforcement. Um, there are three jail coordinator positions and I'll be setting up a meeting with Andrew. We've been trying to make better schedules, just haven't worked the last couple of weeks. But we will hopefully see some added services to the jail here in terms of the social worker. And there is some other discussions about what are the needs of the jail. So I'll be talking to Andrew about that to get that conversation started.
Went along to discussion with Courtney. Um, uh about the um mental health court. And um right now, um we're the only county that hasn't gotten on board with that.
And I don't know if I would really say even on board, I think would, they didn't phrase it this way necessarily. I think we're the only county that hasn't made the first referral.
Right, right.
And I think they just had, I will talk to Sarah and to Renee.
Cedar County just had their first.
Yeah, but they have extend, extended the mental health court to all five counties. So Judge Matt Henry was.
He was.
Virtually in attendance.
On the meeting Zoom.
Yeah, so um should be available, it is available to the county. Hopefully we'll be up and running here soon in terms of having referrals.
Uh, success stories and it was pretty impressive.
Some, some traditional.
Yeah.
What about the committals from the hospital, the MCOs?
Oh. So what Larry's referring to is. It was brought to the attention of Genesis last, I think it was just last week, maybe the week before, that there is a change in language in the commitment. Law, I believe this last legislative session. And the MCOs are obligated to fund an individual who is covered by Medicaid for three days. In regards to a court ordered hospitalization for an evaluation. And does not need to fund any further unless medical necessity is established for the hospitalization. Uh, that is still in discussion. I would say there was no update on that. So Lori's been involved in conversations with Genesis and with. The managed care organizations. DHS has been involved with it, uh but I don't think they've really even gotten down to the nitty gritty of where that's at. So the concern is that somebody could be ordered into a hospital for an evaluation. The hearing has to be held, I believe it's within five working days of the has, of the order being issued. So obviously, uh there could be weekend days in there as well and the MCOs now are saying that by law they're only obligated to pay for three days. Doesn't matter what day of the week, so that includes weekends, is the way I would interpret it. But there could be individuals that are Medicaid covered, but not if the MCO chooses to deny payment after three days.
And what happens? The court orders five days, so there's two days where the county needs to pick up, pay for that. That's, that's where it's going.
Yeah, I will say it was very reminiscent of conversations when MCOs first came in. Uh, very similar conversation and the only difference was I don't think it was in code spelled out. I have not gone back in to look at the code. I called Sarah last week and just gave her a heads up on. But yeah, when the MCOs first came in, they were really advocating whether or not they'd have to pay for anything because just because the court orders somebody into the hospital. The court's criteria for doing that is not the same as what an insurance company, if you will, uses to establish medical necessity to establish the need for the. Hospitalization for the admission. That's to me kind of where the, the two worlds are. They're using different criteria to determine if somebody needs to go into a hospital. So. But that was, I would say probably the highlights of the meeting. It was a really quicker meeting than.
Um, we did discuss that at great length in the twenty-eight E, there is a provision that. All, all of the board members from all of the counties that are involved would meet annually. Um, and we discussed that because of course last year we didn't meet because of the pandemic. But this year, we talked about it and we were, we are going to meet, but I suggested that we wait till after March fifteenth. Cause we're gonna be busy with the budget and obviously we're gonna be busy with other things as well and. That way we can have that meeting and also discuss the transfer of funds that each county is going to have to make. To um, cause we'll have to amend our budget to. Send that money to Scott County because it has to all be pooled. Um, and so we just wanna go over some of that stuff with this. With us as well when we meet as a whole.
Yes, thanks for mentioning that and Lisa, I don't know if you had a chance to read this email yesterday. It came from Carrie Johnson.
I, I saw it come through. I did not get a chance to read it.
So I don't know if the highlights on my copy are from what Becky Esposito put on them or if it came through. So yesterday at three eleven, an email was sent up to the county auditories across the state from Carrie Johnson from Department of Management. And it begins addressing some of the conversations about the transition to the state. And one of the dates in here, now I can't find it real quickly, but I'm on a glance at this this morning real fast. Oh, here it is. Um, the money has, actually now according to this email has to be transferred by June twentieth. The other interesting thing about here is, um, there is a paragraph that talks about if. Regions are not already structured to have region employees. Regions may choose to transition county employees providing MHD services to regional employees. Well. We don't have regional employees and I think it's been the um recommendation from the fiscal agent, but also I think the governing board's been in agreement all the. All the way up to this point that the region did not want to become an employer of record. And have an employer ID number and go through all of that related responsibility. And that by individuals still remaining county employees. There's still a little bit of that pulse on the local control. As soon as you started, it's just kind of, I do see it as kind of a slippery slope. So I don't know, this just came out. I haven't read it real close to digest, but.
It'll make, it'll, it will make an impact on us as far as our budget. We have to do a few things and I know that they've gone with a new chart of accounts. Shelley's already printed that off where they can take a look at it. We did have a conversation very brief this morning about it.
Yeah, uh, the other thing, Jack, that the reason I'm bringing it up here too is there's a couple of different references regarding their, their recommendations within here and the changes. When a twenty-eight E is established, for instance, if, if the way I read it, if as employees, the. Um coordinators of disability services will remain county employees, there would need to be a twenty-eight E. They're recommending a twenty-eight E. Between the region and the counties as to how all that would be laid out. So several, a couple of times they talk about um. Uh, talking to your legal counsel. So that was one thing we didn't talk about yesterday, that there is money approved to, for the region to, in this amendment from yesterday. To engage and have money allocated for a region and an attorney to act on behalf of the region. As opposed to going to five individual county attorneys and getting their perception.
We just thought it was better to have a retainer with an attorney so that if we do have issues, that attorney will deal with it.
I think that makes perfect sense.
And I think after reading this, because there are a couple of things in here where they talk about the twenty-eight E and what it needs to address, but you refer to your legal counsel. I think this is probably something that needs to be, we need to get somebody probably.
Cause it was, it was, it was kind of a hassle to have all five county attorneys review it and then report back and. None of the five agreed. On anything. So I think if we just. Have a retainer with the lawyer uh so that we could get uh legal advice.
Yeah, the most recent thing that once passed to county attorneys was just uh within the last couple of months, the proposed contract, performance based contract between DHS and the regions and. Five very distinct opinions on different aspects of that contract and obviously county attorneys have varying degrees of experience with. Contracting of that nature anyway, so um. I think that's something I'll mention to Lori that we, whatever the, and we never really did talk to the man, governing board about the process in which to do that, so I don't know if David was thinking maybe an R P had to be issued. To get.
I would think.
Yeah, um, we will see what, what they suggest. So that was about it from yesterday. Anything else? Okay, and there's a green bag in the freezer with your minute sticks.
I can take him out and pull him out right now.
Trying to pick what? I'll pick my name off all of it.
Yeah, it didn't work very well, so I gave up. I picked up, we had the lacquer that I went through the um Together We Build campaign. Did you win? Is that?
Yeah, I won the other half.
You won the other, yeah. Well, I got home and I had packages with Mike's name on it.
Oh, he's a damn lucky, just keep it.
He didn't say that.
When I stopped down there, Marshall just, he was on the nine one one for me. Did you hear what happened? I said, oh, I did.
See ya.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yep.
This time we'll recess till we're joined with Nathan and um Jeannie. We're being joined by um Nathan and uh Jeannie.
Well, not Jeannie, Caitlin's here. She was with me.
Okay, she didn't look the same.
Yeah, uh Jeannie, we actually had a miscommunication. I thought Luanne put us on. I didn't get a. Yeah, uh, Jeannie, we actually had a miscommunication, I thought Luanne put us on, I didn't get a agenda for today, so I didn't know we were on the agenda. I asked her next week when I asked her, so I didn't, if you hadn't, oh, they wouldn't have showed up, so that's good. Um, Jeannie might not make it today, she's gonna try, she's pulling a tractor right now somewhere in the county, so she's gonna try to figure out how to get over here. She wants, her thing is she's gotta get her departmental report for um. Way commissioner in for you guys to approve, I think is what it has to be.
Well, if she wanted to come next week, you could call her and tell her not to bother.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a lot of stuff going on today, so. Okay, yep, we'll make it quick then, um, we got a board meeting tonight. And I think what we're gonna talk about, since last year I was behind, I guess I wasn't used to the county process. We're gonna start budget talk at our board meeting tonight, that's all we have on our agenda. I put together, and Larry got it, I just sent it last night in the email. Um, a list of projects the county has talked about, things that could happen in the future. And what we need to prioritize, what we wanna do, and I'll try to pull them up here on my phone, so someone prepared here.
Well, and that's okay, and I think that's something that you need to talk about with your board and prioritize and then bring it to us and. So your your wish list, if you wanna call it that.
We have a wish list of forty projects and.
Might have to scale that down a little.
I think there's a lot of things that are gonna have to be scaled or figured out, um, where we wanna go, cause. As we all know, we're a small county and we're not gonna get money.
I didn't wanna say slash them, but we don't scale it.
Yeah, well, they can always be on it and if there's some kind of funding source that comes open in the future that pays for them. That's where it's nice to have that ready list.
And of course you have to incorporate incorporate that into your budget and see where it fits and.
Yep, so that's where we need to at least get the discussion going tonight on. Things we're gonna ask for, and one thing that they're probably gonna ask you guys and something to roll around in your head. Our harbor wall on the south side at Spruce is starting to cave in underneath. Um, in the past, you guys approved something that used the money that the harbor made for five years to pay for that replacement of the north side of the wall.
So that is actually the same wall, the same area that we're talking about replacing the boat dock anyway and expanding that, so it would be a project that would be coincide with it.
Probably, I would like to try to make it coincide, um. Alex got us some project numbers, I mean, he needs to scale back. Cause it was almost a million dollar project that he drew up, of course, and there's no grant in the world that's gonna pay for that.
Alex seems to draw them up.
It was a, it was a very nice. Extensive, wasn't what I was, I was thinking about. Yeah, I was thinking maybe hundred fifty, two hundred thousand what the wall would cost to replace and another hundred thousand to do the ramp, but.
Only wants to give you first class.
Yeah, and it it was nice and I think there's, so he's, he kind of. He sent me a few things yesterday, he's starting to scale back and see where we can come come up with those numbers. To get maybe that rain replacement and wall. Um, the wall probably won't get paid for out of the grant, just the way those grants work, um, we may be able to get a small section of it just cause. It works with.
Ties in with the ramp.
Yeah, but the whole harbor on the south edge. And that one worries me because somebody's gonna walk along that keeps caving in on the outside of it, somebody's gonna walk along and get. Get hurt, so.
That's a liability.
Yeah, so that that's my, one of my number one priorities is trying to figure it out. And that's where I think our board is probably gonna ask, maybe we just take the funds that we make from the harbor for. How many ever years and pay for that wall fix and.
I would, I would get your head together and come up with a poll.
Yep, so that'll be something to expect from us um, on that project. There at Spruce, and there'll be some other things, I'm sure the list is. A mile long and then quit the list is a mile long, so you know how that goes. Has not come in yet, it's on order, so I don't know where that is. The what? The sprayer we have, we have gravel bucket, we have, um, we're just waiting on the stump grinder from Raiders. He said he didn't know when that'll happen, it's, I think it sounds like COVID has everything backed up. Um, I put bids out for trucks, um, since we had that in our budget, probably should have done it early, for some reason my head and my thought. I guess it's not right to do it right as you get the money. Now it sounds like we might not get a truck, cause no, no, the dealerships can get promised to get one before next year, so I don't know what you guys' thoughts are. And I'll bring that up with the board, we might wanna try to roll that. Money we have in the budget fish, I don't know if that's possible, how that works, can you do that?
You can, you can turn it back in and we can re- reallocate it in.
No, he'll be back in next year's budget, but have you been talking to him, do you think there might be one left over yet somewhere? Well, are you looking at a standard cab or a crew?
It was a crew or quad or whatever you call it, I mean, you can't. Theories did give us, one they have on the lot up there tonight, it's sealed, I haven't opened it, it's, we'll open it tonight. But he told me it's gonna be a lot more than.
A standard.
What we're used to, cause he can't. Some, the way county vehicles work, they usually make them in the fleet with the Chrysler Dodge. They give a fleet price, they can't change the price they paid for it to the fleet price off their lot, so. He said, expect to have your jaws drop when we see it, so I'm expecting this one more than I. But maybe not, I don't know, we'll see what happens.
Certainly.
I mean, in the past, we got some really good bids though.
Yeah.
I mean, the one we got last year was a really, really nice truck.
Yeah.
Bare bones.
Yeah, sometimes you'll have one left over, they wanna be rid of, or, you know, to find a regular cab truck, I don't think you're gonna do that much.
I don't think anyone.
No, they're hard to, so I guess we'll find out with that, that. Something aren't open tonight and budget talks and um, last month's meeting. Where I invited Dan Parks with A C I, Darryl Parker showed up. So the meeting, we talked about the grants for. We have grants for Alex to do the engineering on bridge board access again. There's new grants that you know are just open that'll come. Um, in December for paying to do some of that work, there's two hundred thousand available for the whole state, so I'll pay for the project. The board wanted the E C I to pursue. Those grants to see if we can get some money to start that process of doing some of that work on those accesses. And that uh, water trail plan is starting to ramp up, we'll be finishing it and signing it with the state. That way we're available for all the grants here soon, so. That's kind of starting to move along, um, camping season's coming to a close. Pretty good year, I think we were at the end of September. About thirty five thousand above projected, what our revenue was for the whole until next June, so we, we did good, I guess.
Yeah.
July one.
Did Spruce Creek pick up a little bit?
It wasn't, I wouldn't say it was busy, busy, but it was averaging forty to forty five, fifty campers a weekend. So um, Sabio was actually slower this year than last year. I don't know if that was the fact that river is lower and they can't get out of the lake into the river from by boat.
That could be.
Um, some of that stuff, so. But we still, we still did pretty good, I, with our, we raised the prices, I think our revenue is showing that. We're above, you know, what we were ever in the past at this point, camping season, so. As far as that, if you can interject, Caitlin, anything else new we got going on? Just maintenance stuff.
I will tell you, my cousin's son and his wife and their little girl were here from Alaska. And they spent Saturday at Prairie Creek Park and they said it was absolutely delightful.
Okay, awesome.
They had a great, great time.
Good. Yep, yeah, yeah, they just uh, that's a nice. Just a nice addition, those guys helped uh, they did hundred and twenty six kids out there yesterday, went through a fish with them. But they're all second graders, so that was a, sound like it was a. They had hooks on, in several of them, so. Bridge should be, it's done for the trail at Hurstville.
Looks, I see it sitting there.
The deliveries, they're just waiting on when Trader Kirkstruction says they'll be there to unload it off.
So they got a pour peers yet there before they said something?
Yep.
And what's this timeframe?
He was hoping he'd be in there this month, yeah, I'm talking, is it day end?
Day end.
Day end, so he was planning on sometime here in the next, well, he doesn't have much too much, too much more time in the month. I don't know, I need to try to communicate with them, but last I talked to him, he was hoping the end of this month. They gotta do a little bit more dirt work on that.
And B says he coordinated with the utilities or?
He has been coordinating, and I think that's part of his ways, he's waiting on them to show up.
We agreed to approve the permit for the power company today.
Did you? Okay, um, he's waiting on them, and I know they had a, I was in Wyoming two weeks ago for a week. Continent, they had a meeting with the utility company there, and then tried to figure out. Their best process to make that go forward, it sounded like McOpel Valley was open and willing to do whatever.
I see there's fair amount of trenching or digging going on and.
Yeah, um, we're actually trying to drain that last bit of water on the north end and kill off the rough, the maces fish. That was just a way to get water to run out. There, so uh, I don't know if it's worth our time or not, but.
So could you go in there with a little trencher and just trench it?
We did it with a skill, our skiveller, cause that's what we had available.
There's pretty good trencher.
Yeah. Yeah, um. You know, we got a little.
So you just start from scratch and then fish it, dude.
That's what our plans are when we're filled, fisheries is gonna get us fish for in that, that are native. To our system instead of those rough fish that are keeping it muddy and ugly, the water should be cleaner, we're hoping, so we'll find out. We don't know if it'll work or not, but.
So you need to take the little kids out there and fish.
Yeah, yeah, yep, so, um, yeah, other than that, we don't have anything too new on our end. We'll know more tonight, uh, after the board meeting on budget items and where we're going in the future, what we want to discuss. Yep, so, yeah, any questions for me?
Now that I can think of.
When are they gonna start?
I need to call him, I haven't talked to Brian for a while, I know they had a pushback by, I don't know, I said to him, but. It was several weeks ago, he thought he'd be in there.
I stopped a week ago, I think, and just walked in there, just far enough to figure out that.
Yeah, I think he thought he was gonna be in there this week, but that hasn't happened yet either, so I don't know. When that'll happen to them, so.
Is your completion date to that?
Yeah, in November, I think is what I put in the for deadline, so they got a little time, but not, not done. They seem to think they can, they get good weather, they can get it done in four or five days, so. I'll have Jeannie contact and get comments for next week.
Okay, that'll be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, is there any other business to come before our meeting today?
Uh, just to report on the uh, waste authority, we had a meeting yesterday and they got bids back for the replacement of the scale, we had talked about that, the outside scale. There's a hole in it that they got a steel plate over, so people, trucks don't fall through. So they got a bid on a concrete deck scale like there now, which is about thirty years old, so there wasn't. That good of life expectancy, and then they got a bid on a steel deck, which was a lot much easier to replace and to take care of. Um, and the concrete deck could be down, shut down completely for twenty one days. Steel deck would be four days, so. The board had decided to go with four days and he's looking, I asked if there's any other way we could come in for two hundred and fifty of them. To get to, they're gonna have their equipment there, enough equipment there that they can't get around it to get to the dump site. In the building, so there's really no other way to get in there, so if you let our major people come in to. The cities and Denver and whatnot that know that you're gonna be down for four days.
So they'd be able to get in somehow with those trucks, or would they send them to the plant or something?
They probably have to either stockpile it or go somewhere else. That's the main we could lose when we're in the vicinity of eighteen to two thousand dollars a day.
Eighteen to twenty thousand?
Eighteen to two thousand, two thousand.
So yeah, and I just said another way we could come off the gravel road and come in and put up a portable scale and you still have to put up a portable scale or have them weigh in Andrew or. Well, scales out, they got us more, four extra peers. So they need to pour extra peers for the load sake, load scales under the pit, so.
Put a few of those in my day.
Other than that. I did go up to a care facility yesterday also, it must have went in a couple here, but. And he's working on the septic system pipes down there.
So my understanding, he wanted to coordinate with Jared and try.
Sounds like next Tuesday that Jared can be there with his, a couple of his guys and then. Tackle that, hopefully that will look a lot nicer next year. Again, I never thought of the varmints in that building with the panels and whatnot, they're probably not too secure in there, so.
Well. If it didn't have to be anything, then maybe it could be chewed on, so to speak, you know.
Or you could have it in a metal cabinet or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then that's a possibility too, even. So I, I could talk to Jared about that, if that room's available, but. I have nothing else.
Okay, there's no further business, uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor? Hi, motion carry.